Session order, you ready there Ms. Allison?
Yeah.
Okay, looks like we have one item. Are you gonna start this off Larry, all right, and Stephanie or both? We have two eyes so we can see both of you if you can.
Larry and Steph.
This is made for some interesting reading, I'll tell you, my lord.
All I got of it was like, you know, you don't like Bud Light, show them to the wine cellar.
So basically, the general gist of this was to build a separate section because right now the IT acceptable use policy, the three eleven and the three eleven A, the password policy, is kind of buried in with proper work attire and other assorted ones that aren't specific for technology. So, or my request is to make a separate section for technology policies and to move those policies into this new section and add these additional policies. Part of the problem is that the three eleven, we try to cram everything into one acceptable use policy and there's so much stuff with technology in different pieces and combining it that I think it's getting, it gets lost in the train, in trying to teach staff about it where it's easier to say, here's one policy that deals with email, here's one policy that deals with your wireless internet access, here's one policy that deals with how you connect to us remotely. So it was a way to try to turn a big blob into manageable bytes.
So you're gonna, you're gonna delete some sections of three, is that, is that the plan?
Yes, because I think, I think if you look at it, there are sections that overlap in three eleven and eventually I think three eleven will go away. There are some other sections in there, I was trying to do it a piece at a time because one, we have to come up with, you know, format these policies, make sure there's something that we can actually put into a personnel manual and policy and then get the, then inform staff so that they, they're, they know that these policies exist and what the rules are and then build on that. That's why a separate section made more sense instead of us going three eleven, three eleven A, three eleven B, three eleven K, it's on, you know, if we were gonna end up building this huge blob in the middle where if it had its own section, it's a little bit, could be a little bit cleaner.
Well, given the headlines of today, it certainly deserves some special emphasis, shall we say.
Right, and that, and breaking it out like that I think would help. I know we just revised that policy two years ago, acceptable use policy.
Long time ago for IT.
Yeah.
Really is.
Yeah.
And several of these suggestions that Larry and I put together, we used a national standard template, but they were specific suggestions that were presented to us by the National Guard, the FBI, and the state police.
Yeah.
So we didn't just Google them, to come up with them, we spent a lot of time researching and trying to figure out what best practices and other places were.
Would it be possible, in order to get employees to read it a little more occasionally, five point three, the non-compliance section, just in the first, second page, right there. Would it be possible to put that on the first page of the section and not under each policy?
Yeah.
Because as Mr. White said, it was interesting reading, you get to each one and it's repetitive and then-
Right, the compliance, the policy compliance part is repetitive and this was laid out specifically, if you read any of the other county policies, none of them have the, this more strict.
I don't have a problem with the policy itself, it's just, it would save a lot of-
Just mention it once.
Mention it once at the beginning and that way people are aware.
Yeah, I was just trying to match the, the way the county policies are now, every policy-
We have county policies?
From ninety six, most of them, but at bottom it does say-
The paper is this color.
Up to, up to and call, up to and including termination, it was very vague and this we've made a more definite stance.
Right, and I have one question with verbal warning. Is there such a thing as an actual verbal warning? And the reason I say that, in order for a verbal warning to be documented, it has to be-
Written.
Written. It's very contradictory, but um-
I don't think so. I mean, you, you write in their personal record they were verbally warned as opposed to giving them a letter, that's being the difference, you still gotta document it.
And that's what I'm saying, you still have to document it. So, I guess my question on verbal warning, is the verbal warning left up to the IT department or the individual department heads? And I, my problem with verbal warnings is what supervisor A may say, supervisor B is going to be way off and if we're looking for consistency.
And, and the problem is that I'm a director for IT and not a director for other departments, so I don't know that I can give out verbal disciplines to other departments based on
Right.
way the organization works.
Crazily, we've notified that department head.
To do it, to do the notification.
But, but something I've, I've seen work to address your problem is that, that it, there's an acknowledgement of oral or verbal warning.
And that's our current practice.
As opposed to the written warning, but there's still, there's still a piece of paper-
It has to be documented.
And it's, and it's acknowledged, it doesn't, doesn't go into the, the detail. I know that I'm not the nicest person in the world, but you have four chances before you terminate it for a particular offense.
Right.
Is there a reason for multiple verbal warnings?
We, we discussed that, I'm really glad you brought that up. One thing Larry and I wanted to be cognizant of was because technology changes so rapidly, if I make a mistake today and I get a verbal warning and then I make a mistake three years from now, is it fair to give me a written if it's something totally, so we want, we wanted to leave it somewhat flexible, so if someone's here, you know, twenty years.
Well, would it not be good to, within a twelve month period or something like that? I've seen that elsewhere.
Yeah, that's one of our, was one of our questions, we were-
Because you have people that are gonna game the system, plain and simple.
Right. Right.
And, and there, there's a, while we're on this topic, there's a difference, there's a, the section that it, that addresses the tools, I'm trying to find it now, as opposed to say the email policy or others, it says remote access tool policy. To me, that's a, that's a different kind of violation, that's one that is pretty much willful and has a certain deliberate flavor to it. I'm not so sure that a, that a verbal warning, especially an undocumented one, is, is sufficient there, that one probably needs a little bit more-
And that was one of the things we struggled with, with these things, offenses could be different, so if someone actually ended up with, clicked a malicious email link by mistake, that's probably a verbal warning. If they came in and ran some kind of encryption program and crashed the servers-
Or installed a tool.
Are you gonna give them just a verbal and?
Right, so I, I think you have to, on certain of the sections, there's, there's- There's two, I think, as I remember on tools, that one and what was the other one? The wireless tools, or it was called standards, I guess it was.
Wouldn't a deliberate act of its, of its own weight be dealt with differently? I mean, it's, it's kind of like someone who, in, in any situation, I mean, if, if someone did something that was, broke some policy they wore, I don't know, something stupid like cut off jeans, that would be different than somebody came in and hurled a brick through the front window, I mean, they're, they're handled differently, so.
I think, I think they're different, you know, not to put it in the degree of misdemeanor versus felonies, there's the willful versus accidental type of, of situations.
Yeah, you read the policy, but it was something you forgot about and screwed up.
Yeah, whereas other things, everybody knows full well their no-nos.
You never know.
One of the things-
You don't send out racist emails.
One of the things, at least, that our practice has been, I'm not saying it's, it's the best practice, but anytime we get into a, some type of disciplinary action, I'm usually advised of it because I've gotta be prepared that if we go through a process, there could be a grievance filed. And so the county attorney is quickly put in, usually on the front end of these type of things, and, and the way our disciplinary action goes, informal verbal reprimand, I wanted to read this, the discussion between the employee and the supervisor identifying inappropriate behavior and the anticipated corrective action, then a written, formal written reprimand, a documented discussion between the employee and the supervisor for which a written record identifying the offense, the date and circumstances of the reprimand discussion, the anticipated corrective action is prepared, written reprimands are maintaining the employee's personnel file. To me, you get to a written man, reprimand after you've said, you made, you know, by accident you've made a mistake. If it's a willful thing, then to me, there's no informal discussion, it's a formal reprimand or depending on the severity, I mean, you can go into suspension.
Would it be clearer if we maybe reference that direct policy-
Absolutely.
In the IT policies?
Yeah.
When you say disciplinary action shall be in the following order, that seems like you've gotta go through one, two, three to get to four.
It's sequential and-
And I'm not sure that we wanna be there, there's in certain stances that we may wanna go to three or four directly.
There's a, a manager supervisor should address infractions to the standards of conduct as soon as he, she becomes aware of unacceptable behavior. There are several options available to management to address an employee's infraction and determining the most appropriate disciplinary action, management will consider the nature and severity of the infraction, the circumstances surrounding the offense, disciplinary actions taken in similar circumstances, ensuring consistent and impartial treatment of employees, and the frequency of the offense, first versus repeated occurrence. So, these are all options, I mean, some of these-
Could we use that instead of what we've got here?
Yeah, I, I think by referencing, because there, there could be an offense that's so egregious that it requires immediate termination.
Right.
There could be that you walk them out of the building, I mean, it has happened.
Absolutely.
We, we had that, where I, my passcode suddenly changed ten years ago and the IT director was locked out of the, the building immediately because he did something.
Well, may, maybe the thing to do, to, to go back to where Jim started the conversation, that, that early in the, in the section, there's, there's a paragraph that does two things, it references the parts that Brian was reading, but maybe it also says the severity can range from, you know, uh-
Instead of child, it's-
As opposed to the progressive order.
Right, right, or something like that.
Can range from a documented, documented verbal warning-
To termination.
To termination.
Up to and including termination.
Yeah, just, just to set the stage, but then refer to the section in terms of the policy. I think that's it. Something that's very important in this is not just the policy, but policy training, because if everyone is not trained on the same playing field, you will end up with people that have the same offense repeated and repeated and repeated. And then somebody else, their first time, they get absolutely nailed. I've seen it too many times, it just-
How, how is it currently set up, proposed, not currently, but proposed, in terms of, you all would document it, you all would give it to human resources, correct? And then where would it go from there?
I guess that-
To the supervisor.
Okay, that's, that's, that's where I get a sense of weakness, because different supervisors are gonna, are going to react differently. And I, I, I think we need a, I think we need a way to keep that from happening, because you're gonna, you're gonna have, you know, Department A supervisor is very security conscious and, and he's gonna land like a, a load of bricks on his employees, whereas another one is maybe more-
Was it fair?
Yeah, maybe doesn't understand, maybe they're not as tech savvy as the first guy and they end up kind of shoveling it under the rug. And I don't, I, I think, I don't think that's right, and particularly when we're talking about, you know-
An impact on the whole organization.
This is supposed to make everything better, so while we're at it, let's make sure we're making it as better as we can and, and yeah, consistently, just as.
I think there's a, I, I agree with you, I mean, the, the consequences of, of an infraction need to be carried forward by the supervisor with the offending employee, that, right, there may be a different approach taken by one supervisor over there, while this calls for consistency. I think in having Allison as the human resources manager communicating with the offending, you know, going down through that chain, I certainly would be included in the loop on that and, and my follow-up with the, the responsible supervisor, you know.
That's not where the issue is, that's not where the issue is at all. The issue is that it doesn't come to you and that, that's where my issue is, is the, the lax supervisor that does not bring it into the system. And then I'll go on the flip side.
You're talking about supervisors that, that sees a violations but doesn't act on it?
Doesn't act on it and that's where-
Or is told of a violation and doesn't act on it, or, or acts on it very, very nonchalantly. And if, if, if those decisions are then gonna get kicked up to you and you're gonna review it, then you just wanna review it to begin with, I mean, there's, there's-
But that's where countywide training to, because we actually don't want to get to a point where we're taking disciplinary actions, we want to educate the employees for their protection to not accidentally do these things.
And I've intentionally delayed our cybersecurity awareness training so that I can include these in that, because that's a mandatory training, that we can, hey, these are the new policies, these are the-
And, and to have Larry or Stephanie do the training so that everyone receives the same stamp is really important.
Yeah, I, no, I, I absolutely agree, let's, let's talk about the two ways violation, violations are, are determined. What are those two ways?
One way is if IT becomes aware of it.
IT becomes aware, monitoring the network, or a supervisor becomes aware of it or somebody in a position of responsibility.
Unfortunately, a lot of times with cybersecurity stuff, it's an outside party that detects the problem.
But they would tell you.
Yeah.
So it, it's, but, but your experience so far has been more or less, you've been the one finding out the violations rather than a supervisor determine.
Maybe the process should be that, that, we don't wanna put Larry in the disciplinary role.
No.
He's, he's the fact finder and the reporter of information, maybe he should report that information to you and then you, then you deal with it as necessary, I, hopefully this is gonna be a rare occurrence, just about.
I think, I think so, once, once you put the, you know, the up to including termination at it, I, I would probably, let me see if the board agrees, is that eighty-five, I'm picking numbers, ninety percent of the time, you're gonna find out a violation because you're monitoring the network.
Correct.
Okay, so that then gets reported, Allison, me, whatever, and we communicate that to the responsible supervisor to start the process of, of, of disciplinary action. I've gotta be satisfied, certainly to a degree, that that has been done and, and here's, here's the results of it and documented what went on. If, we also communicate to the supervisors that if you become aware of a violation before IT even gets a chance to become aware of it or-
Because there are some in here that that could very well-
That, that the expectation is they're going to be held equally culpable, I mean, equally responsible for ensuring that violations are reported and acted upon or they can be, kind of, it's almost that guilt by inaction.
Yeah, it could happen, because some of these deal with papers left on a desk unattended.
Let me-
Supervisor would see that most likely before you.
Right, let me, uh, let me go ahead and, and, and offer this up, because I think this would be one of the things that we've talked about, I think I've talked with you individually, the constitutional officers. Part, part of this is that their employees are subject to the personnel policy except for the, the separation piece, because they're constitutional officers and retain that. The ability to provide these sanctions, you know, then reprimand all the way to progressive up to termination, we've gotta work through that with each one of the constitutional officers. One of the things that involves the constitutional officers is access to the network, that the board supervisors is supplying, so a condition of using the network presumptively is a condition of following these IT policies and helping the board and ultimately, you know, I mean, by extension, enforce violations that they would have to agree to that.
Clearly, the nature of how local government's set up, there's gonna be some difference between county offices and departments and, and the, and the constitutional officers. And, and there's, there's nothing we can do about that, that's just baked into the pie. But there, there needs to be, I think, a good faith attempt on our part to make sure that everybody gets treated the same way for the same level of, 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 you know, crime. And even to the point, I would say, of it, at some point, you know, department heads needing to take some responsibility for when one of their employees stubs their toe. So.
How do this, this policy, uh-
And that would apply to constitutional officers as well.
Policy compliance and, and, and matters of, of discipline, how does this differ from what we do throughout the rest of the process? I mean, should we have some consistency across the board?
We should have training throughout the county as the new policies and procedures are implemented, so everyone gets training to avoid, to me, the most important thing is to avoid these situations.
I, I'm hoping the only ones that we're gonna, that ever get reported and might have to do anything about are somebody who's willfully doing something wrong.
The other thing is, according to the policies and procedures, I believe all new hires are supposed to get a, a disc, a disc or a copy of some sort of all the policies. And not just, okay, here's all your papers and, yeah, there you go.
Sign them and we're, we know you-
Right, there needs to, there needs to be a good faith effort on the county's part to educate people in what is given to them, you know, and know that there's actually some teeth if an offense occurs, because that's so often, and I, one of the things I'll use is the smoking in county vehicles. For the most part, it's not an issue. We had one employee leave that it cost, what, about a thousand dollars and the vehicle still smells.
We have, we have a, a policy about that?
Absolutely, absolutely, so-
Would you buy a car that's been smoked?
No, I didn't. But, and that's part of my concern, is, yes, when someone comes to work here, they've got, they need to understand that come in, do a good job, you're rewarded with your pay and leave and everything, but don't take advantage of the system and ruin it for other people. Because as they say, all policies have somebody's name on them and that's what, plain and simple, what will occur. You know, I worked, I worked on the other side of local government long enough, one place I worked, we started with literally three pages in SOPs, by the time I left, we had two four-inch binders full. So if the prevention side and educating the employees makes a huge, huge difference, because if an employee knows the standard that they're gonna be held to, it makes their job to perform well easier. Something we might consider doing, I know, matter of fact, this topic came up yesterday in, in, in our Dogwood Village meeting, they're, they're in a different business, but they have, they do a lot of training. Anytime there's an event or new employees or whatever, there's an extensive program of training and most of it is, is done, you know, using technology as a resource, their, their, their online training modules and these kinds of things, maybe we need to consider certain elements at least.
And, and another element of the, if some, there is a violation that occurs by one person and there's sort of a follow-up, not necessarily pointing at that person, but saying, here's somebody made this particular mistake and they're alerting everybody to it.
It's, it's called in-service.
Yeah.
But, but for example, these, these policies, an example could be that, you know, Larry and/or Stephanie could, could put together a little, I don't wanna say podcast, but a module, video that, that sort of walked the employee through it, rather than, than rely on them reading it, especially I'm thinking about a new employee or, or maybe to kick this off, you know, you, you have people go, go to a place and, and use some of the, use some technology to help us.
But, you know, this is just one small piece of all the policies that employees have to deal with.
This is, we have a small policy and procedure, maybe, a very small.
It, it's, it, it, it needs some attention because of, of it really being pretty dated, some, some of the bulk of it's from ninety-six.
Allison's working on it.
Right.
We know that, because she brought us a pretty good stack, not long ago.
But I, I, I think that is one of our overall goals, is to update and manage and revise and get things current, I think this is really the, the first step in that, if this becomes a, a training set for all, everybody, anybody that has, has a username on the network will be required, and we'll, we'll think through how the training goes, I, I like the idea of the hands-on piece.
But you can, you can have it such that, that they are required to log in and, and take, be exposed to the training and, and that, the record to, to document that will be retained so that you, you know what happens, I mean, there are modules that-
And especially if you put a short test at the end.
Yeah, you can do that too. I mean, I, I, I'm not so sure that we're, excuse us, we've left your subject directly.
Did y'all like sitting down?
You don't seem, you don't seem shocked at all.
They've seen this episode before.
But, you know, maybe, maybe the, the, this would help roll this new policy out, as, let it be sort of the beta test, if you will, of the, I, I'm not so sure that we, we are in a situation where some, you know, a little bit more sophisticated and, and recurring training would be, would be in order. Because, and I'll give you an example, what, what made me think of that as well, there's several places in here, not, not a lot, but a few places where you list specific standards or specific technologies or protocols and the, those can change sometimes fairly quickly and I was a little concerned about, do you have to go in and amend these policies more frequently than you would like because of stating the standards here? Well, if we have them in a, in a different form or, or we communicate them in a different form, even if you left them and updated them, it wouldn't be that big of a deal, but, but that's another point to think about, is some of those standards, you know, I like the idea, for example, with remote access, that, that you or your, your office has to approve all of that. And so what the standards are probably doesn't matter to the end user, because the requirement is it's gonna, it's gotta come to you for approval anyway. And so I, I just, I don't have an answer, but I, I'm a little concerned that those standards evolve quickly enough that you don't wanna be dragging this policy out and having to-
I said it earlier this afternoon, I was glad to find out that I do not have remote access, I don't want anything to do with it.
I don't know whether I do or not, I don't think I do, I hope I don't. Something else that ties into this is a requirement for all county employees to have a county email for a number of reasons, not limited to their schedules, because it will save people the time and inconvenience of telling somebody that they're scheduled to work and then putting it on a calendar and the person not showing up and saying, oh, I didn't know, well, if they have the email.
I think everybody that-
Not everybody in the county has email.
Not, not-
Some of them whoever have county emails, be sorry.
They, no, if they're a county employee, they can be required to have a county email account that they can access from work, I'm not saying it on them.
That's what I'm saying, I think, I don't know.
We're getting fiber put through the counties.
I think, I think the-
How about, how about the guys that run the compactors?
That, that's what he's talking about.
That's the only one that I know of that don't have email.
Uh, there's, there's some others that don't.
Most part-time employees, librarians, for instance.
The library staff.
But there's.
But they also don't have a computer, so they just share them.
But they have the computer access when they're working, right? So it, this policy applies across the board. Uh, we'd probably have to do something for the collection sites.
Well, one of the things that Larry and I have been talking about, um, right now, in order to get an email account, you really get the complete Office three sixty five, full blown Word, the whole, whole nine yards, uh, on it. There's a license fee that's associated with it, how much is that a month, Larry?
Fifteen dollars per person per month. Per account.
And if we start giving part-time library people full access to, to that. So one of the things is that we would move into another process where we would only issue email address, which is a, a certain amount of dollars per month, but it.
Yeah, it's like four dollars per.
We haven't done that yet.
Like four dollars per person per month.
Yeah. Uh, absolutely, and that way, and I understand the collection sites, but there should be no other county employees that do not have the access or the use and they, they should be required to have it as a condition of employment. You're talking about a policy like this.
But, and, and if you're saying you've gotta have it, but we're not requiring you to have a home computer.
No, access it.
So all we're saying is you can have an email site and, and if you're, you know, if you're working on a computer and there are few, few who don't, uh.
So janitorial staff would go to your office to use the computer?
Man, and there, there's occasions where a person supervisor, and, and the janitorial side of it is a perfect example. Their supervisor may not see them on a daily basis, but has information that needs to be shared with them. You give them an envelope, if it's something they don't wanna be shared with, oh, I never saw it. Every time they log into their email, that's documented.
But how many janitors log into email?
They'd all have to, that's what I'm saying.
They don't have accounts, so they don't.
Is there, is there a reason they need to?
That, Kurt, they have phones, right?
No.
No?
Not your flinging staff, your supervisor.
You have a couple of them, they're personal.
That's eighty six dollars a month per person for a cell phone.
Uh, just an email account.
Yeah, an email account for four bucks.
Yeah, and I mean, there's kiosks located throughout the world that you can walk up to and log into your email account and you have no other access, that's all you have is email access. I don't, I think with the I T department that we have, I don't think it would be very difficult for them to set up the necessary computer stations.
I, I guess I'd go to the question of the janitors, is there a problem with communicating with them? Are we, are we trying to solve a problem we don't have?
Yes, consistency. If you have consistency across the board, it takes away.
What about somebody who just doesn't wanna use, I mean, are you saying we should compel all of our employees to use email?
Yes. As a, as a condition of employ- okay.
I'm not sure I can agree with that.
Okay, question, how many employees get paychecks now? Get actual.
We pay our employees?
Exactly. How many employees receive a paper paycheck?
Zero.
And they are, they are legacy employees, correct? Is it not a county policy that when you get employed now, you get an electronic paycheck? It's no different than an email account, none.
I think it's, I think it's, I don't think it's the same.
No, I don't, I don't either.
Okay. I've worked on the other side and I believe it is. And I'm one of five, but I can tell you, it's, I, I, I don't understand how there's a difference.
First of all, I don't agree with forcing people to have direct deposits, so.
But we do.
And, and, okay. But, uh, essentially, everybody's got a bank account. And to get paid, people are willing to go out. To suggest that we should compel everybody to have an email account and that they should check it, I'm just not sure that's a realistic thing to do. I mean, I, I think twenty years from now, it won't be a problem. I think now you've still got some older employees who don't, they don't have anything to do with email, they don't understand computers.
If you've got a kiosk in the building here and you say, okay, the janitor, you should check that every time he comes into work.
I guess if, if you allowed some kind of, of, uh, if we could do the legacy employee thing again and say that people could opt out of that, uh, but all new employees have to do it, then I, I maybe could get along with that.
I'm not, I'm not even sure I'd agree with that. If, if we don't, if we don't have a situation where they need, where we need to talk to them.
We, we need to take away the requirement for mandatory electronic paychecks.
Is that, is that a motion? Does, uh, does this policy address electronic paychecks? And it can be amended, right?
Do you have to have a driver's license to work for the county? Okay.
Is it a requirement?
Yes.
Without a driver's license.
Yes.
Why?
Probably wanna make sure you get to work.
Because it's the rule.
No, I mean, I'm just asking.
Why do we discriminate against people?
Requirement on the majority of our job descriptions.
I, I can see it in the job description that many of them require it.
Most people provide it as a form of identification to when we're verifying their eligibility to work. But they are able to submit other documents.
But there are people who do not have driver's license for various reasons. Their felony convictions, you know, of a certain kind that, that may still be eligible for as a.
There are certain, uh, uh, IDs that are required for the I nines to proof of citizenship.
The ID question is a different one than the, specifically to the driver's.
Yeah, if you say you've, they've gotta have an ID card of some kind, I don't have a problem with that, that's just so you know that, that, that they're, you know, they are.
Back, back on the email, so I make, I'm just gonna do this, we're go- we're going to try to get everybody that.
Dragging this thing out, aren't we?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I just wanna, because I, I think there is some practical use to requiring everybody that, that has a practical need for an email to have an email account. And that, we, there may be some of the positions that it's not practical to do that because either accessing or, or, or.
Quick question, does personnel policies manual say a disc or a thumb drive or a hard copy? Or does it just say a copy?
So we have, past practice was that everyone got a paper manual when they came in for, um, their in processing. And I worked with Tom recently and we implemented, um, we just made minor adjustments to the employee, um, handbook acknowledgement form. And they are pointed to the current personnel policies on our website, which I can tell you right now are updated faster than anybody's paper copies are. Um, and the form just has an additional statement acknowledging that they've been provided instruction on how to access the personnel policy manual online. And they're acknowledging their responsibility to read and understand the policies.
How about the people working on the, uh, collect, wage collection sites?
Yes, sir, when they come in for in processing, um, before they report, they come in for in processing here and they, they do the same thing. And it doesn't matter full time or part time status, everyone signs acknowledging that, that they've been made aware of the personnel policy manual. They're not signing that they've read it, they've signed their commitment to read and understand it.
I like your policies with a couple of minor changes.
So I guess, uh, if there are anything, uh, appropriate action would be to go ahead and adopt these now, right?
Or revise the.
Make the revisions and bring them back.
From the technical standpoint, yeah, I think we're still discussing exactly how we're gonna put together the.
Shared with the constitutional officers that we've been taking comments today and incorporate them into.
Thank you, Stephanie, you and I did have that conversation, didn't we?
We did, yes, sir. Um, that Larry and I would incorporate the board's comments today and then send those, um, drafts back out to the constitutional officers to see if they had any, uh, objection objections or any issues with them. And then we would bring them back to the board to, with everyone's comments.
Thank you, that was precisely the conversation.
From now on, email that to Brian, so that he will have a record of that.
One, one other question, there, there are other matters, one of the things I didn't see here that I, I think I expected to see was the discussion about passwords, for example, there's a little bit in here, but, but you, you've, you are, have already implemented some and I think are considering implementing some additional, uh, guidance or what could become policies with respect to things like email, uh, uh, passwords. My, my question, I, one specifically about passwords, but then, are there other items with regard to, uh, data and I T and emails and those kinda things that are sitting somewhere else that should be brought into this?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'd like to, uh, before we go approving things, I'd like to gather up all that stuff and have it be in one place if possible.
Yeah.
If, if it's possible.
That was the reasoning behind doing the, the, that, that technology section. And to speak to trying to educate the staff because really that was kind of the point of policies is if you read the data protection policy at the top, it says, this is really, you know, leaving papers out and that sort of thing, locking your desktop, those are, those are good practices and, and the policy is more intended to remind them that, that they handle confidential and sensitive information, that they handle, that they handle it properly and accordingly. It's not a headhunting thing. Um, there's a whole section that we could do on data governance, which is a very large framework. And so I was trying to eat the elephant one bite at a time, so to speak. Um, the data governance piece is a whole framework because you have to classify what your, what your types of data are. Who the real owner is, we don't own the data as the I T department, the departments own their data, we're just custodians of their data.
But I guess my question is, would you put that kind of policy in the personnel manual or would that be some other standalone, uh, piece? I, I don't know that I have.
Yeah, I don't know where that would fit.
If you want me to the other about it, but, uh.
Sure, I have, we, we've looked at examples of that and I'd reserve, I'd ask if we could research that a little bit further because we, we've looked at examples of the governance policy, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's a pretty big document, framework, when you think about.
Could you take the rest of the elephant and put its framework in here for future updates?
Maybe outline the sections or something.
Okay.
You know, to, that, I think that would be helpful because it, it sounds like your goal is to gather this in one place to the extent that that's possible.
So we see it, we see the other things brought into this.
Yeah.
I, I would suggest that, um, right now, we have two sections, three eleven, use of communications equipment and technology policy, three eleven A password policy, that we actually, this thing, it should rise to create its own section. And just, and, and, and everything having to do with everything technology wise is in one section.
And the three eleven and three eleven A, those two policies would be dropped down out of being section three into the new section.
More than technology, it's, it's data protection as well as.
It's ownership of data.
Yeah, it's all that.
That, it sets. There you go, good, good idea, that, that's kind of a working, the working title, technology and security. Cause I think the ownership of the network, anything that rests on our drives, even though it's personal information, is county, you, you, you relinquish ownership of it. Once it hits the network, that type of.
You could still have this, uh, adopted in, in pieces, I think you're, I think that's fine. But I think we, if we can understand the end of the movie, that would be helpful.
More like a title of those sections and maybe a, a description or.
Yeah, just future description or whatever.
That would be my, my recommendation, so we don't have, from an H R perspective, when it's all in the personnel policy manual, it's easier for us to have a grasp on and, and understand and, and train and show employees, particularly new employees, versus having it as a separate S O P or S O G like we do with some of our other departments, where we're not involved in the process of creating and revising and, um, enforcing those standards.
Especially since this is gonna apply to constitutional officers and others that are
Right.
a little bit more arms length, I think it'd be better to.
I'm sure the sheriff has lots of policies that never show up in our manual.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
And, and I struggled with that a little bit because, um, an S O P is usually applied to a department and not the whole organization, so.
However, if it's within the county government, it should be available knowledge, available information for anyone within the county government. We don't want hidden policies within departments. Trying to be politically correct, sir.
The double secret SOPs that I violated and nobody told me I violated?
We have had that occur in certain departments before, yes.
Which, and, and I've, I've, I've had experience with that, one of the reasons why we, 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 the county didn't prevail on the grievance was because it was never written out in a way that the employee knew that they were being held to that standard. But we'll break out technology ownership into its own, it'll get its own standalone section in, in the personnel policies.
So are we doing a section or are we doing a separate policy?
We're doing a section in the personnel policy.
Technology and security section.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you.
Call it the, the Caff, Clement Strab section.
All right. I guess we'll take a little breather. Take a ten minute or thereabouts.
We'll take a ten.
According to Denver, it's five o'clock here. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes or additions to the agenda, anybody has?
I have none, Mr. Chief.
I have none.
Your motion?
Moving through.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. Special presentations and appearances, introduction of Courtney Weisner, detention agent, and I have a hot update, Kelly Shiflett, the new four H educator, so come forward ladies, if you would. Courtney, I've actually met you at a couple of meetings, the Virginia McCattell ones and others.
You can come right over here in front of the.
Yeah, that way you're. That way you're on, you're, you're on.
Everyone can watch me?
Yes.
That's right.
Welcome, it's nice to have, uh, the, uh, the team back on, on board again.
Yes, sir, so we actually, we have a fully staffed office now, so that, that's a good thing. Um, most of y'all I've gotten to meet, um, through being the programs educator for almost the last three years, so it's been really good to step into this position and I thank y'all for, for your support of that, um, and just continuing to serve the, the producers, the ag producers of Orange, um, you know, we've had, I guess I've had this job now for a month, I started on the twenty fifth and I can't name you a day that we haven't had a, a large demand in the office, so that's really good, um, and promising on my part. Um, it's been really good and Steve and I, Mr. Hopkins and I have a very close working relationship, so it's really good to have him as a mentor um, and continuing that on. I, I tell everyone that comes in the office, it's like you have big shoes to fill and it's like, I'm not Steve and I never will be. But Steve and I have a very close working relationship, um, and that's been very good stepping into this, um. I'm very thankful for the time I've had, you know, in Orange before this point and, and continuing on, so I'm really excited and, you know, I kinda hit the ground running, so.
Courtney, you, you might give, uh, some who haven't heard a little bit of, just a.
My background?
Yeah, just a, a thumbnail of your background, so.
Yeah, um, so.
You, you have an ag background, so.
Yeah, I do, I do have an ag background, so I'm actually from northern Indiana, um, and I, I moved to Virginia here, but I graduated from Purdue University, um, don't throw too many stones. I graduated from Purdue University, um, don't throw too many stones for me at that. You know, you say that in Virginia, it's like you're not a tech grad, you gotta kind of duck a little bit, but, um, so I, I do have an ag background, I grew up on a seed stock cattle operation there, um, my parents showed Sematol cattle on a state and a national level, I was lucky to be very involved with that on all levels growing up, uh, the, you know, production side to the marketing side and the exhibiting side of that, um, so I was very involved in that and then went to college. I was on a very successful collegiate livestock judging team at Purdue, um, and was lucky enough to go to basically every national contest in the United States and, um, do that and then kind of continued from there and then I worked for the American Sematol Association, which those of you that don't know, man, it's a cattle breed association on a, a national level and I helped, you know, seed stock and commercial cattlemen across the country with educational needs and programming needs doing that, so this is kind of a continuation of that. But yes, I definitely do have an ag background, so, and I'm happy to be here in Orange.
Great to have you.
Thank you guys.
Hi, I'm Kelly. Yes, I'm Kelly Shiflett, I am from Orange County, I graduated almost four years ago and I went to Virginia Tech and I graduated in December, I know, I went to Virginia Tech. Um, so I'm really excited to be back here in Orange, I started out in four H when Casey Daniel started out in four H, so um, seventeen years, it's been a long time, but I'm really excited to be here and serve my community and, um, this is my third week on the job and I have been busy every single day. Um, I went to a meeting at the high school this morning, so we're really getting involved in in-school programming and of course working on out-of-school programming as well, so I'm really excited to be back in Orange County and working with a great team at the extension office.
And I guess in a, in three weeks or so, we're going to visit with you to hear more about your programs. All right, look forward to it, all right, thank you. Okay, real estate assess, oh my goodness, real estate assessment update. Mr. Eames.
Yes, sir. Good to see you, Mr. Chairman, board members, uh, thank you for allowing us to be here again, working for, uh, Orange County. Just wanted to, uh, to update you a little bit on the, on the, uh, process here, uh, we started the field work back in late fall. At that time, we started, uh, um, basically gleaning the county, uh, all the new construction that had taken place over the last twelve months, so we've, we've, uh, been around the entire county doing new houses, additions, things like that. Our field guys, we are in, um, we have three appraisers here right now, one is in Lake of the Woods. Uh, one is in the Gordonsville area and, uh, one appraiser is, is on the far east, east, northeastern part of the county near route, right along Route twenty and Route three there, so, uh, we're out knocking on doors again, gathering sales, uh, verifying information, respecting the rights of, of the public when we see, uh, no trespassing signs as such, so, uh, we're on schedule, still waiting on the, um, assessment software. So we're still working with the, with the old field sheets right now and, but we will be updating those, uh, when that software becomes available.
Do you have a rough set of milestones that you can share with us at this point?
We're hoping that, uh, we'll have access to those, to the new system sometime in, uh, in March or April, by first of April. Um, and then they will have to go through a training on that, um, the good news is that same system that, that you folks bought, that they put, just put it in in Northumberland County, so my business partner is working on that project. He's been through, uh, a training there, so he'll be able to say, uh, show me and, and help us with, uh, some of the stuff that they've learned on that project. Still, uh, plan on hopefully finish unless we find problems within the conversion of the data. Hope to finish by the fall, send notices out, you know, late fall and, uh, and then have our two weeks of hearings sometime after, uh, Thanksgiving.
Still this calendar year?
Yes, sir, still our goal, so we, we're still on schedule to finish up and go on record, uh, twenty twenty with the new assessments.
You have questions?
Gary, just, Chairman, how are you seeing values, uh, home sales?
Well, we're seeing, just statewide, we're seeing values increase right now, uh, you know, I think people are feeling good about the economy, uh, people are spending more, if you just go for a walk in your neighborhood and, and look at all the, uh, porches that are being built, you bring porches, people are spending money on their homes, uh, the, uh, new constructions, uh, statewide. And, uh, I, I talked to our, our lake appraiser and I knew Mr. Frank would be interested in, you know, we are seeing definitely increased, uh, in Lake of the Woods, so, uh, yeah, you, you're folks, uh, you'll be worth more if you look at it that way.
Like, I like the sound of that.
Is that a cash register ringing?
People want, uh, water, they want, uh, a view, so, uh, it's back, that market is back.
How about industrial commercial property?
Industrial still, uh, I, I think it's making a comeback, but it's still, it, that's going to be one of the last things I, I believe that'll show increase, um, um, the older buildings, you know, once they go dark, they, you know, they're just worth pennies on the dollar, so, uh, commercial properties, um, we're, we're seeing some increase there, increasing uh, rents, uh, as far as, uh, your multifamily, so it, uh, I, I think overall there, you know, there will be a increase in value, so, you know, folks might may as well, um, learn about it now, that, uh, property values, unless the economy takes a turn in the next six months, which I.
Now, you're planning for two weeks, uh, in the fall for, uh, for review back to you, appeals back to you?
Yes, sir, those will be the informal hearings. So they will come in and actually speak to, uh, our folks. And then after that, um, uh, you, uh, the judge will appoint and, and you guys will have recommendations for a board of equalization, which will meet sometime in the spring of twenty twenty.
When does he need to appoint that?
I think we did it in like October, the last time, it's later in the year.
Okay, any other questions?
Any questions, um, the commissioner revenues office, they know how to get in touch with us and, uh, so if, if you guys need us or, or have any complaints, please, uh, please let us know. Thank you all for.
Okay, consumers' agenda, your motion? Favor say aye? No business, new or old, so we'll go to Department Director, Constitutional Officer Reports, Public Safety Radio Project Update. Stephanie and, et al. I'm not sure who all is here. I see Dominique and Mike and.
Yeah, it's just a small group.
I see, okay.
I might not, like, since you said something.
Since you're wearing the camera, we want you on camera.
Is that Lightning who's got it on?
It's a green, I think, I think we're safe.
So when it turns red.
Yeah, when it's red, you're being recorded.
Thank you for allowing us to have this time to come and give you an update on the P twenty-five radio project. Um, Chief Deputy Lucas and I came to last July and we've been steady working, we've wrapped Dominique in to our weekly status updates and project meetings, um, since she started in August and we are, um, we, we just ended a big engineering milestone, so we wanted to update you on where we were. Um, put together for your review this evening. To kind of tell you what we've completed and, and where we are, to remind you that we awarded the contract to Harris last June. Uh, started the preliminary engineering phase in July, that was completed this last December, that included some rearranging on parcels of where the towers were going to go, um, we've been having weekly status meetings with Harris this month since we, um, completed our preliminary engineering, we'll be able to switch those to monthly meetings. Uh, we've worked with Harris, our electrical engineer and our outside plant engineer in regards to the fiber project to try to, um, reconstruct the shelter so that they benefit broadband and the P twenty-five system. So most of the shelter designs, I have two doors, they have two separate areas, one entire separate side for P twenty-five vendors, one separate side for broadband and we had our broadband folks look through those drawings to make sure that everything meets broadband specs and P twenty-five specs.
So two, every shelter has two accesses?
Not ev, not every shelter, so for example, uh, the TAC shelter isn't going to have broadband, that's just radio and Club Mountain, since we're renting space there and we don't have fiber going there, it's just, it's just radio.
So is that a cage separation between the two?
Yes, sir, it's a cage, but then there's two separate doors. And then we've worked with both, um, our broadband folks and Harris to figure out how to optimize rack space and accessibility and power supplies and things of that nature, um, we also during that process, um, adjusted generator size to make sure that we had enough power there to, um, accompany any broad, future broadband equipment. Our, what we're going to be working on next is actually doing the final inspections on the equipment, testing, working through radio talk group, talk groups and things of that nature and, um, hopefully being able to meet our cut over timeline of November, December twenty twenty.
What kind of testing you're going to be doing if you don't have your towers up yet?
They will test in the factory to make sure that how they have set up the software speaks to itself correctly, that's going to be going on this um, spring and summer and then once we have the towers, we're going to start construction of the towers in June to August timeframe, once I get fiber there, they can do testing internally to make sure that it's communicating properly.
Okay, so the configurations they're testing is something different than what their standard is?
Yes, those are some things that we can, um, customize.
If I remember from their discussion with, meeting with them, that, you're, what you're talking about is they're, they're testing at their facility, they're gonna they're gonna configure and load software and then test in their facility.
But, but, but our configuration software.
Right, well, it'll be our actual devices.
Our, they're just testing it there and then federal engineering will double check it, make sure that it meets all of everyone's standards and what Harris promised us it was going to do. And then once they move the equipment here after the shelters are done, then they have to make sure that now that it's here, it's working correctly and communicating amongst themselves.
And is anybody from Dominique or Mike, or is anybody going to observe those tests or they're, or maybe there's no need to?
No, we're going to be invited down, uh, it's going to be in Lynchburg, so essentially they're, they're making all the radios and the equipment in New York, shipping it all to Lynchburg, they're going to put it together in their warehouse in Lynchburg. Uh, once they get it up, we'll go down for testing and they're going to do some fails and, and all of that testing to make sure that if you drop this, then that one picks up and, um, the timing and all of that testing, so. I think the only part of it that will be ours per se at that point will be, I think they're going to do some testing with our talk groups uh, that we, that we select and they program in, so, but it's, it's their equipment, it's going to be their site. And then once our stuff is up, then they'll move that stuff from there into the appropriate location here in the county and when it's together, they'll do a bunch of testing from there.
But they need the shelter and fiber first.
So when do we expect to finish the configuration testing at, at Lynchburg?
Projected to start this spring and finish this summer, um, we've had some suggestions from federal engineering to perhaps push that back a little bit, um, they have suggested that we try to make that closer to when they're actually going to deploy it here to make sure it has all the software updates and everything it needs. So we actually have a scheduled call with Harris tomorrow to suggest perhaps looking at that timeline a little bit. That way you don't have to make sure, you know, you have to re-update everything before you put it into the shelter, um, which I think is a great idea, so we're going to speak to Harris about that tomorrow. The rest of the presentation, really I wanted to go over a little more in depth with you, the, uh, sites and some of the, um, preliminary shelter designs and maps, I had, um, our new GIS analyst, Jim Witt, um, very graciously offered to help me take the information off the blueprints and put it on our parcel, so we have a little better visual than just looking at blueprints, um, I just wanted to go over sort of the basics of each of these tower sites, um, to give you an idea of, of what we've been working on. The first site here is the Barbersville Collection Site, that is a hundred and ninety-five foot self-supported tower. It has an eleven by twenty shelter, it'll have a chain link fence around it, and this is one of the shelters that will have separate broadband and radio sides. And if you can kind of look at the, the small little blueprint I put here at the bottom, you can see those two separate doors, there's one door for the broadband side, one door for the P twenty-five side. And this will have a fiber connection.
I think that's a lattice tower since it has three supports, is that, is that correct?
I believe so.
Not a monopole, okay.
Yes, because it's, it's one ninety-five. And then the next slide just gives you an idea of where that is on, on the parcel, we had to use the, um, far end of that, it, it's actually a rather large parcel there in Barbersville, but this gives us plenty of, um, access and security being off the main road, um, also helps visually. The next.
As, as we're doing the, uh, uh, fiber insulation in the county, are we running fiber to these places as a part of that project or is this a separate project?
We, um, the board set aside some money last year, a little over a million dollars, to do laterals that included coming to, um, the majority of these sites.
Okay, so the same contractor that's installing the, uh?
Yes, sir, we intend to use that contract, we haven't decided exactly how much fiber is going to go there, but at this point, when he gets to the route, if it is a route on the initial thirty-three miles, Barbersville is not, um, he'll put a handhold there and then we can decide later, you know, exactly how many fibers we pull, do we want fibers to go parallel down the driveway, so they have redundant routes in, you know, things like that. Um, but we don't have to have that decision made quite yet.
The, the redundant fiber was not figured into that price tag, correct?
No, it was not, however, we, I asked him to do two eighty-eight, you're not going to be two eighty-eight to each tower site, so there's some flexibility there.
But we may be looking at that a, as an increased price tag.
Yes, sir, that is best practice.
Right, now I just wanted to make sure.
Not anything that you necessarily need to do. Um, the second site is the Mountain Track Collection Center Site. Uh, this is also a hundred and ninety foot self-supported tower, same size shelter, it will also have a broadband and radio side with separate doors. And it is proposed to have a fiber connection as well, and it does have a separate entrance from the collection site. So if you're looking at the gate to the collection site immediately to your left, there will be another little TV driveway and a gate there to get in to, um, this tower site, you can sort of see that on the next slide here when we look at the parcel. Like beige area is the driveway.
Stephanie, one question. On all of these, they all have diesel generators. Right, I, I'm just curious, I know when we were talking about for, um, some of the other sites, uh, propane rather than diesel. Is there a reason we're going with diesel, it, it lasts for a more prolonged time?
That was the best practice suggested by Harris and the electrical engineer.
The reason I ask is I know what was dealing with, I believe, the, um, the fireside. Their concern was the growth of organisms in the diesel, if it's, if it's not used. Just like that double check to make sure that that's not going to be an issue.
Okay, absolutely, and I have, um, been speaking with our public works director on procuring a countywide um, generator maintenance contract, so we could test things like that because now number one has separate contracts for their tower sites, then once we own the tower sites, we're going to be, need to be responsible for maintaining things like that. So it's definitely something we're keeping eye on, but I can, I can double check.
Yeah, because I, I remember back when, I forgot where it was we were talking about, uh, and it was recommended to go with propane rather than diesel, just for that contamination reason, but, um, I, I think typically diesel, you can run the sites longer with diesel, but.
I'll give it.
Yeah, I mean, th- there is a, there is a problem with, um, and, and I'm actually going to contact somebody and, and get them to run me through it again, but I know there is a problem with diesel, it's, uh, I think preferred on a I know there is a problem with diesel, it's uh, I think preferred on a site where the, it's gonna be used often, but if it's only gonna be used. Uh, very intermittently, which hopefully it would be, it can be a problem, so, but I'm gonna.
Depends on how often you test it, uh, and cycle through.
Well, it's not, well, testing, you only get usually like fifteen minutes or twenty minutes.
Problem is how the fuel's sitting there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, depends on how, how long we test it.
I, I can't tell you like it, a site like Clark Mountain, um, that real estate is golden for American Tower.
Right.
Which means it costs golden for us as well. And um, so we've got a generator pad that's set up there, if we change it and we have to add a propane tank to it.
I understand, but.
It'll cause a little.
I know you don't wanna go through the same thing you went through this past year.
Not with Clark, no, sir.
So, that, that's why i- i- if we can just make sure beforehand and Mr. Johnson's checking as well, that's, okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, Stephanie, uh, on Mountain Track or, or Barbersville, uh, did we have Doug Heron or, or, have we talked about the strand count of how many?
Yes.
What, what kind of strand count are coming to these towers that'll be serving public safety and broadband?
We haven't made any formal decisions, best practice that they suggest is twenty-four.
Twenty-four strands.
Yes, sir, 'cause that's the most economical, smallest bundle that you can utilize.
Twenty-four strands, and what was spec'd on the laterals for the contract, the pricing was two hundred and eighty-eight strands. So, the, the price differential between two hundred and eighty-eight strands and twenty-four is significant, so that million dollars may go in a redundant routing rather than a single.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's just something I just need to update that quote with Mr. Bean based on the boards.
So, you say you only need twenty-four strands for this public radio, anything else is gonna be supplied available?
For broadband.
Twenty-four would be sufficient.
For broadband and public radio.
For both, mhm.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
The twenty-four covers broadband too?
And cell companies.
Yes, sir. They really need one and then maybe spare each, so.
Yeah, they're only lighting too typically.
Yeah, it's pretty sufficient, just, it's not economical to put in thirteen, you know, fourteen. The next site is the site um by TAC and Prospect Heights Middle School. This is a hundred and fifty-foot self-supported tower, uh, slightly bigger shelter, it has a chain link fence. Um, it will have multiple locks on the gate, it has microwave and fiber connection. And this is also the primary backup location at the moment for the LMR system.
Wh- when do you, uh, you say multiple locks, like different kinds of locks, or?
Um, the town has requested, we're, we're in the process of working through a draft MOU with the town to use their access road to that water tank to get to this um tower site. And they have said that we could put our own lock on there, so they have a lock to get to the water system if they needed, we have a lock that we can use to get to the tower system. And then we'll have a separate lock at the end of that driveway to get into our compound that obviously only we would have.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure, I, I gave some of this information to the school board, I wanted them to understand that a middle schooler's not necessarily gonna be able to walk up the hill and get into a tower site. You know, it's gonna have a fence and locks and, and we'll be secure.
One of, one of, one of the issues with town and that we're working through is because that's public water supply.
Yes.
Security, you know, anybody getting up there doing something bad with the water supply, so.
Right.
Resolve, in fact, we just worked this out with the town manager this morning, we'll have two chains, two locks, and then we just have to notify them who is going up there uh prior to them going up there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm presuming at this point we don't know the generator size on this one.
Um, we should, I believe they're all fifty KW.
Yeah, there's more detail, go.
Go over to the next one there.
And I have, I didn't wanna overload you, but I have all the drawings for all these sites, so if there's any in particular that you're curious to see more, just let me know.
Yep, I'm good now.
So, the next steps for this site in particular, as I mentioned, um, I'm working through draft um agreements with the town to get access to the gate. Um, and with the school board to lease up that land, so we can actually build the tower site, so we're working through those drafts now. Um, brought them to Tom and Brian's attention and they've passed them on to our counterparts at the school board and the town for their review and consideration before we bring them to you.
Mr. White, I had been to the school board, when was that, it was back end of summer, I guess it was, to tell them about pursuing this site.
Yes, sir.
And that at, at the point that the lease is, is ready, then we'll work with, I'll work with Dr. Sneed to schedule, advertise a public hearing that the school board will have in order to grant this lease.
And we got that approval this afternoon, so we'll be working through doing that.
Oh, that's right.
The next two slides um just give you a little bit of an idea of that, that parcel and, and where um the shelter exists on that, on that parcel. Um, this first one kinda shows the fiber route and the second one there is the um site itself. So, you can see that's the, that's the water tank, so we would be extending the town's road and then we'd have that second gate there getting into our shelter. Um, site number five is the new public safety building. Um, we'll be putting in a forty-five-foot freestanding tower that will have a fiber connection, um, and it will have antenna connection to TAC and Clark Mountain. Um, the next steps, we're currently in the process, we, the FCC required us to run a notice in the local paper of our intent to do this, to see if anyone has any environmental concerns that they can file with FCC. Uh, the second required notice uh will run in this Thursday's paper for that. Um, we're working with assistant county administrator to figure out how to actually tie in utilities and things like that to the PSAT building. Site number six is the RSA water tank at the intersection of Rockland and Flatiron Road. Um, this site is um already fenced, RSA already has this fenced off, so we will just be putting in uh a shelter there that will have broadband and radio sides. Um, it will be connected by fiber since we're literally right there going to the middle school, that's a very short run. Um, so the next steps for this particular site is to work out our agreement with RSA to be able to put our equipment there. And we will have to, I'm sorry, skip over this first bullet, we will have to reinforce some of the railings on the top of that tank, but other than that, should not disturb the tank in any way, 'cause the shelter will be, will be separate.
Do we know the, the height of the uh tower above the existing tank at this point?
Well, they're just, they're literally gonna mount the equipment on the rails.
So, the antennas are just gonna mount on the rail, okay, oh, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. There are two antennas there now that the school uses to get internet to the middle school, so those can come down and ours can go up, but ours are apparently a little heavier, so they're gonna have to reinforce that railing. And the next slide again just shows you where the shelter is in relation to the water tank. Site number seven is the RSA Treatment Plant off of Route Three. Uh, this is also a hundred and ninety-foot self-supported tower, um eleven by twenty shelter, it will have broadband and radio sides, it will also have the fence around it. And it will have microwave and fiber connection. The next steps in this process is the um driveway to get to this proposed site. Um, potentially positions itself on land that is owned by Tricord and RSA, so we're getting a survey done right now to verify that information. And if that is the case, we'll need to work through an easement arrangement with Tricord.
What is your timeframe on that?
I, we're having it surveyed.
Okay.
Now.
There, there may be some adjustments down there is the reason I'm asking.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Now, the uh, the new public safety building.
Yes, sir.
That tower's gonna link up with Clark, is, is anything else gonna link up with Clark?
Yes, so for, from a microwave standpoint, Clark will be connected if you, sorry.
A couple charts on these.
Give it a head, Mr. Johnson, the last line here shows you Clark Mountain, um, and it will connect via microwave connection back to TAC and to RSA Treatment Plant. So, we sort of have the whole county covered as much as possible that way.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm, I missed that on the, on the TAC.
And Barbersville is going to hook back to TAC, right?
No, there's no microwave connection to the fiber.
Clark has to be microwave and you need to, you need, it needs two places to go. And as you see on that last chart, the, the chosen places are the RSA Wilderness and then back to TAC.
To give us maximum coverage.
The forty-five-foot tower at PSAT will have antennas on the top of it that will allow dispatch in the event of a system shutdown on the tower. To connect to either Clark or TAC, which again gets you right back into the loop again, so that's, that's the purpose behind that forty-five-foot tower.
In fact, if you access, uh, if you've got a shutdown, it gives you access to all of the towers, you backed, uh, back from the uh?
All of the towers that are connected via microwave.
But if you've got a tower that you connected to microwave, does that connect, or from, by microwave, does that feed back into the uh, uh, into the fiber, so, to go elsewhere?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, so if you hit TAC.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, a, a backhoe takes, takes out a fiber optic line somewhere.
Yes.
Absolutely, and that was the intent of having sort of all ends covered.
Alright.
That's where you get the configurations.
And the last site is site number eight, which is Clark Mountain, which of course we leased that space. Um, we're going to use the existing tower, um, and we're currently in the middle of um renovating the interior. So, it is brought up to the standard that is sufficient for technology and equipment instead of the bit of steep bugs that are currently in our equipment there now. Um, and like I mentioned, that will have a microwave connection, and the um next slide sort of gives you a little layout of. It, it's a little room we're building inside their big compound there, but it, it sort of gives you an idea of where the equipment should have gone.
All the construction is internal, there, we're not, somebody asked me that not long ago and I couldn't.
Oh, it's internal, we have a sort of a big open room now shared with multiple people and it's open to all the elements and isn't secure, so we're, we're sort of closing out area.
Yeah, okay.
Blocking off the corner for us.
Right, okay.
The only exterior work that'll be done, they gotta put a generator pad down for the new generator.
Yeah.
And they have to build a new ice bridge that runs between the building and the tower, so our lines don't get cut by falling ice. So, that, that's essentially all that's gonna get constructed outside, everything else is inside.
And then the next slide here is referring, just give you a, a visual of the um connections. And the, the RSA um Wilderness Site should be pink, Harris made this map and I requested them to update that, 'cause I think it's a little confusing. I just didn't get it in time for your board packets, but that gives you an idea of, and um, what's connected by fiber versus what's weight. And then for next steps, um, Major Lucas took the initiative, thank goodness, and got our tower application all squared away with American Tower. I just got the invoice today, so we're, we're good to go there, thank goodness, um.
Thank you for, for helping build it, build the stuff inside.
Um, so we're making progress on that, we're very excited, um, we're working on figuring out um any easements or agreements that we need to have in place. Um, and the next steps would be to work to finalize that route um of fiber, where it's going, what the string count is, do we want redundant um loops, things of that nature. And we hope to start construction on the towers this spring and summer and um testing summer, fall.
What's your expectation, are they going to build those towers sequentially, do one and finish it and do another, or they're, or they're gonna bring several crews in and have multiple sites ongoing at the same time?
It's my understanding it was one at a time, but I could've just assumed that.
I don't, I don't know that it matters, but I, I know we're gonna get asked.
Oh, yeah.
Among many other questions.
Yes.
I know we were trying to be conscientious, especially of the site at T to try to do that one at a time that was most convenient for the schools. Um, so I'm thinking that one might be either first or last, just depending on, on what they suggest.
It, it's a little bit of a moving mark too, because with the federal government shutdown and FCC stuff getting pushed back.
That delayed us a little.
Um, some of the other stuff that we got going on, it's a little bit of a moving target, so some of it'll depend on their contractors that they got in place to, to build the stuff.
I would think they would be different crews, one crew to get there and start it and get concrete poured. You're gonna have to have a crew to build the buildings and you're gonna have to have, somebody who's gonna put the, put the tower up, so.
Are you gonna climb any towers, I saw an ad for tower climbers.
No, I will not be climbing any towers.
Not a tower.
I'm a hundred ninety-five.
So, your estimated cut over date, uh, late twenty twenty?
Yes.
That's uh.
Yes.
Cross fingers, okay, got it.
So far, even with delays, we've been able to keep on track, so I'm, I'm hopeful.
Does that include the consoles and everything, 'cause there was a discussion at one point that those consoles would come in, you know, early in the process.
We are hoping to be able to put those in in September when the building is at a substantial completion point, um, that is our intent at this time.
So, we're not talking about moving them any longer, putting them here for a while and then moving them hopefully, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds like a much better plan.
We're struggling to find the plugs to do that. We're hoping to line that the September fourth is the substantial completion date, so that's the date we had told Harris that we could hopefully.
Kurt's smiling, yeah.
Very good.
Kurt's nodding, so he's saying it's not gonna be a problem.
Especially since she didn't say the year he can go was September fourth.
And it was a sunny day.
That's right.
Alright, well, lot going on, any, any other questions anybody has? Thank you, keep us posted.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, uh, DMV outreach program, Ms. Pope?
Good evening, gentlemen. Alright, so we've got something new and kind of exciting coming to the office, um, back in November, DMV approached me about bringing their mobile office to my office. And of course, I jumped at the chance, who likes to sit at DMV all day, nobody, so, um, they can do most transactions, everything except testing. They can't give you desks, so don't expect that, but anyway, um, did y'all get a flyer with all the services that they offer?
Yep.
Um, we've tried to advertise as much as we can um on all the websites, all the county Facebook pages, libraries, county offices, post office, that kind of thing. Um, we'd like to offer this once a month, but it depends on the amount of traffic that we get, so. Um, our first time last month, we got twenty transactions, which they said was pretty good for being the first time, so. Hopefully we'll get more transactions, um, they're gonna be at Lake of the Woods March the sixth and my office March the eleventh from ten to three. So, great service, do y'all have any questions or?
Is, is there any sign or, or posters or anything at the collection sites, 'cause that was another thing I thought of.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
I don't know, I don't know what you have, uh.
That would be a good.
But there was, I didn't ask Kurt about this, but it seems to me that there, there's enough traffic flow through some of those that it uh, might be, we're thinking about it at least.
They, they haven't received the email on it.
I'm not gonna take that bait. Yeah, great, great, 'cause you're, you're right, that is, that, that's a hassle in the.
Yeah, we even had a few of our county employees use it last time, they came down, got the driver's licenses and we're out, so.
Great, good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dominique, I think we're.
Back to you.
Back to you again. You've been busy.
Yes, sir, I have, um, it's a pleasure staying before you guys tonight. It is officially six months since I joined the Orange County team and I have definitely hit the ground running when I started. Um, here, of course, the center had just recently undergone a consolidation of the number one center and the sheriff's office, under to one consolidated dispatch center. So, we had a couple of challenges before us, one of which was training um and staffing, so I made those my first two priorities. Um, I was able to promote a dispatcher to supervisor, so that we would have leadership on all four shifts. And then hired two full-time dispatchers and a part-time dispatcher. We did have one dispatcher and one supervisor resign, however, um, in that time I've been able to fill the dispatcher position. I still have a supervisor position outstanding, um, which to fill that gap, I created a hybrid shift for one of the daytime supervisors. So, she's actually covering two shifts, five days a week. I've also been working on our radio system with my partners that were just here with me earlier. Also, um, our CAD procurement process is well underway. We have been able to narrow down the top candidates and we're doing some follow-up demos uh tomorrow and next week. So, we're very close to selecting our CAD vendor and that project will be kicking off once we've identified and signed the project.
So that's a this spring, late late spring type of project, you think, at this point?
To get it started.
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps, yes. Once we narrow down the final candidate, gotta do contract and and that thing, but then once we get that all solidified, we'll be underway. Um, and that's gonna start with everything from data conversion and build out and so forth, so the CAD will be probably fall or late twenty twenty as well. Um, depending on how how quickly they can get the system built out for us. Um, going back to dealing with the training process, I also uh put in place a structured quality assurance and quality improvement process. So now dispatchers are receiving monthly um QAs of their medical calls, so they're receiving real-time feedback on their performance and op- identifying opportunities for improvement there. I identified that we had a huge um.
What what's your criteria on the success of the of the uh medical calls?
So we use a emergency medical dispatch software that's built into our CAD system, um, that's called Pro-QA. And it pretty much prompts the dispatcher on which call, which questions to ask and which order and based on the answers to those questions, it shunts them to the next series of questions to identify the proper call type and get the proper pre-arrival instructions. At the end of those calls, that data is captured and then we use a software that's built to go with the Pro-QA called Aqua, and I have two supervisors that go through and actually rate the calls using that software. One uh one of the other issues that we, I was able to identify was our overtime um expenditures. We were um pretty much through our overtime budget within the first ninety days of the fiscal year. So I restructured some of the um leave policies and the use of overtime and also getting those staffing um gaps filled helped to reduce our overtime. And once everyone is fully cross-trained and staffed, we'll see a significant de- decline in overtime use.
Where are you in the cross-training process at this point?
Yes, so three dispatchers have been able to become completely cross-trained, who were not previously. They were trained in one area but not the other, so three of them have successfully completed cross-training. Three are close to being cross-trained. Um, one of the new hires that actually bought on board in November has already breezed through our training program and is actually functioning as a patrol dispatcher right now. She still has to be cross-trained in firing EMS, but she is actually up to speed enough to operate a radio within her first three months, so we're making steady progress. Yes. Um, another project that we have going on is the migration to next generation nine one one. Um, the first steps of that project started prior to me coming on board and that was hiring Timmons Group to help clean up some of our nine one one addressing um data errors that were currently in our system. And I think Barbara Crozier and uh James Whip, our new GIS analyst, who has been working directly with Timmons to get those um addresses corrected, clean up our data. And now we are gonna be meeting tomorrow to look at the next steps, which would include assessing where we are with the addresses. We've gotten up to about ninety-six percent accuracy. And then signing on to or making a decision as to whether to sign on to the AT&T contract um to be our ESI net provider, which will then start our funding process through VITA to get our systems updated in order to support next generation nine one one.
What are the areas that they have most trouble with their nine one one locations?
Well, we had a lot of, as far as our data, we had some addresses that um were incorrectly numbered. We had addresses that um were no longer, there was no longer a structure there. Um, some of those issues. Um, and in cases where we had whole streets or whole subdivisions that were numbered incorrectly, so the evens were on the odd side and the odd side were the evens. We sort of made a decision to leave that data as it is, leave those addresses as they are. Um, and even with doing that, it's still got us to where we need to be with AT&T. Now, once we sign a contract with them, they will reassess our data again, and then there may be a need for us to either readdress a few addresses in the county.
I just wondered whether most of the rural or or urban areas have had the problems, or is it both?
Uh, we're trying one, two, four, three, five, James Madison Highway.
Okay.
We we watched the ambulance drive back and forth and and they were like, we know it's here somewhere.
I think it was pretty spread across the county.
Pretty even across, okay.
Uh, just one, one thing, Dominique, um, i- i- with this next generation nine one one, just to to remind the board. Uh, Verizon will no longer be supporting the copper that comes in to our nine one one center. And so AT&T got the contract to provide fiber to every one of the nine one ones, so this wasn't this is something that we have to do in order to support the next thing and and it's trying to, part of our challenge is timing their fiber build with our new building and the new fiber, so I think Dominique's working through that with the Virginia Information Technology Authority as well.
Nice challenge.
Yeah. Um, so we've been attending quite a few of um their presentations hosted by VITA, so we can get clarification on exactly what the next steps are. We have a another meeting where AT&T representatives will actually be present um coming March six, fourteenth or sixteenth, I can't remember the exact date, but in in about two weeks, um, we'll be heading back out and sitting with their actual representatives to get some of our additional questions answered. Um, other things that I've been working on is I've been meeting with the Fire Chiefs Association, attempting to modify and finalize dispatch SOPs that will be unified across all stations. And most recently, um, they voted to reinstate the Communications Committee, which I'll be representing my department on and we'll be meeting tomorrow um to get those first steps started. Other things I've been working on, successfully got our NCIC visa compliance um to pass our annual audit, which had previously failed prior to my arrival. Um, so that was a huge accomplishment. And um can speak for the sheriff that he's thankful we didn't have our our terminals shut down. And then um lastly, I've been able to uh complete and submit my FY twenty departmental budget, so. Those are just some of my six month deliverables. I've included some uh updates in your packet. I tried to pull some data for you guys from two thousand eighteen, just sort of give an overall of the nine one one center and.
That's great. Congratulations on the consolidation and then and then the settling out and 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 it looks like you're, from a staffing standpoint, you're you're making progress. Certainly, your turnover rate is, at the moment, is i- is a good number.
Yeah.
That that's helpful when you don't have to constantly refill, so.
Yes.
The percentage of calls answered within ten seconds going from ninety-nine to ninety-seven, was that was that a result of the consolidation and the have people not knowing what's going on?
I honestly can't really speak to that. Um, I pulled these numbers, um. But my not having sort of the history of how they were handling the nine one calls prior to my start, I really can't speak to it. But we have set the goal um for my department to get up to at least ninety-eight percent. We well exceed the NINA standard. The NINA standard is ninety percent.
Really?
So we're doing very well, um, but I've set a standard for them. To uh for the percentage of uh nine one one calls answered in ten seconds or less.
The nineties, which which standard is ninety percent?
Oh, uh, NINA, the National Emergency Number Association.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dominique.
Okay, Veterans Memorial at Booster Park, Tim.
Good afternoon slash evening, almost evening time. Um, I'm here to present hopefully the final design for our Veterans Memorial. It's been in the works for a while. Mr. Sedolko is here representing the Veterans Committee tonight. I'll show you one more slide. The first slide you hear, thanks to our GIS guru Jim, he put this together, shows you where the mo- memorial will be located in the park. Our original location was a little closer on that front corner where the road is, but with the setbacks and things like that, we decided to move it back a little bit into this unused area that connects to a parking lot. Um, it's approximately sixty feet in diameter and it's right next to this access road. You can see the people walk down to the soccer games, which would give a perfect view for lots of general public that's walking by the memorial. The next one is a, uh, first off, the design was by Henchey and Baines, and Mr. Baines, Lee Baines, was instrumental in the past at the park. He was part of the um soccer group that is now OSA. He took part of the group that asked to take it over privately from the county and was big in RNG sports and helped, but his child has aged out of that program now, but he has some emotional connections to the park, so he's helping us out with that. Um, the overhead view, and you'll see one flag, which would be the US flag, and it will have a solar powered light on it shining down as not to affect the airport. The next one is kind of a frontal view and you can see where they added, it was one of their ideas, the two plaques on the two sides on the front. Um, it's the Constitution and Declaration of Independence, and we liked that, but a good idea, we would keep those.
There is the group that uh provides that, uh, actually supports putting in the Constitution and.
Quite possibly, so we'll check into that as we get this designed.
Because uh they uh they they've actually funded uh uh whole displays of the Constitution and the uh.
I think Mr. Cruz and I talked, a lot of this will be in-kind donations as opposed to monetary donations.
I'm I'm guessing you mean the preamble to the Constitution, right? Not not the entire Constitution. It might take, it might take two plaques.
Yeah. No, I I I know that and since they they uh provide actually brass versions of it and stuff like that.
And we're we're still at the point, I believe, where we need to get our approval for this.
Okay.
To move forward.
Before you start going after money?
Yes, so we're uh or or before we're able to get to anywhere near that point.
Our flagpole design, the base of the change, they they originally had shrubbery and flowers and things like that and the upkeep on that would be a little different, so we decided to change it and make it a seating, round seating area in there. The name, actual names of the veterans will appear on the outside of the blocks that face the outer ring going around, so as you come in, you will see veterans' names first. On the inside of those blocks, each one will be the name of the individual war slash conflict, whatever it would be called, and a QR code, one of those little things that black dot matrix type thing that with your phone, you would scan that and it'll take you to a website, which will be maintained by Orange County Parks and Rec. Jason has agreed to do that once the initial data is in, but you will be able to see everybody's name that's on there. And we have, will encourage families or whoever, historians, whoever that has informations, we'll add that where you can actually click on a name and see a picture or whatnot. It'll be a truly interactive memorial.
Nice, cool.
Mixing the older, have the names there with the newer, be able to look at something on your phone and go a little more in-depth.
They have broadband out there too.
Oops, went back.
Will there be an email kiosk there?
This next one gives you a little bit of perspective on the height, shows the folks behind it. The front center ball would be four, approximately four feet high and the outer ring would be two feet high. It would also serve as seating in the middle. This one kind of gives you depth perception and um shows that there is wheelchair accessibility in the middle and between the stones and the back of the front wall, I have a second picture and we can go to that last one. Um, we decided instead of individual flags, we would have plaque type. My materials list is still incomplete until we get this done, but some sort of plaque for each form ser- uh branch of service and we found out just this is how they put them, but we would like to stick with when you have a order of flags with a certain order and it's Army, Marine, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, so we'll change those little orders around so that they'll be in the exact order. So that's our design. Any questions?
Just have a comment. Uh, Tim has worked very hard on this in conjunction with Sid and uh they put a lot of time and effort into this refining it and bringing it to a point where it could come to us so we can take further action.
What uh is there a cost estimate or what do you did put this together?
No, and the 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 cost on this is going to be routed through the Parks and Rec Foundation.
Okay.
Uh, and all the the monies at the present time are going to be through fundraising uh done.
I just wondered how much how much they're gonna have to raise to.
I don't know, and there there's good possibilities that these plaques, we may be able to get the um different armed forces.
Seals?
Seals through um different organizations and everything.
Tim, how will the uh, unfortunately, there will be more names down the line that will need to be added. Have you all talked about how you're gonna address the, how you're gonna incorporate that?
One of the stones will be blank for future. There'll be one for peacetime as well. Um, in fact, Barbara Banner's son was killed during peacetime, so he would be on that one. Um, Mr. Sedolko and the veterans have done a pretty comprehensive search of names. They've cross-checked um through the government, through the Historical Society. He's now currently running articles in the Orange Review with the names that go up to the World War Two. The day we, whatever date we decide to have the ribbon cutting, there'll be a plaque there that says, as of this day, whatever date such and such. This is our list of names, and we will have another QR code that clicks this for an updated, and we update on the website rather than trying to figure out how scratch names into something or, they won't be actually there, but any names that were missed that are brought to our attention will be added. Future names for if there's another type of thing.
I notice you've got twelve separate uh stones there, blocks there. Are they all gonna be separate wars or separate segments of the wars?
Correct. All separate, and that goes back to.
We have ten right now of the peacetime.
Ten plus the peacetime plus a blank.
Going going back and starting with American Revolutionary War.
Okay.
So are you, I'm I'm a little confused. Are you saying the blank one, the the conception is that it will stay blank?
Hopefully.
That's what I'm trying to find out because. Or or will or will you be adding, uh, if there is?
Well, there would be one for the current thing that's going on and we would add to that. But the blank one would be for World War Three, a separate conflict.
And the idea would be that it, they would be, names would be added to that? Okay, alright.
One one of the faces of each one of the wars will have enough room on it so that if a name comes up that wasn't otherwise identified, you could still go back and add that.
I'm not sure that's, I think that's where our website was gonna be coming in, because as of this day, we would have, it depends on when we go and um come up with pricing as to whether this is gonna be etched into the granite or this is gonna be a brass plaque added to it. Those are the things we have to look into once we get this price situation or design, then we can go to.
If you're adding brass plates, then you can, then you can add them, add them reasonable cost if you're having to go in and engrave.
Correct.
Well, it is done though. I've I've, it was actually down in, down in Gaston County, North Carolina, a couple of months ago, and they have, they have a very nice uh memorial there. And uh, you know, it's it's clear that they've gone back in, and yeah, it's not perfect and you're not gonna you're not gonna get everything to line up exactly right, but I think it's, I think it's more important that anyone who gives their life gets their name up there. I think that's more important than than it be exactly, you know, a hundred percent perfect in the same format, or I mean, you need to get as close as you can, but.
And that's what we're here for tonight to get.
So I would definitely lean toward, yeah, we're gonna add, when we find out about new names or new names occur uh that we we have a a process in place to add them.
And that'll help us in deciding which way we go. You want to add the names and.
You should, in terms of us approving a design, I would like to approve a design that is that is compatible with adding names.
Okay, uh, let's see, you you want some?
I I would make the notion that we approve the attached conceptual design for this Veterans. for this Veterans Park located, dislocation in Booster Park.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in, in three seconds.
Actually, we're all...
That's probably, probably sufficient. Need more discussion?
Uh, I just, I wanna thank, uh, everyone, I'm not even gonna name names, I'm just saying everyone who's worked on this. Thank you. It, it looks great, and I think this will be a real addition to, uh, to Orange County.
I agree, yeah. It's taken a while, but it's, you end up with a good product, I think we'll all be proud of it.
Thank you, Tim, and Sid, please take back to all the other involved parties what Richard Johnson says.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's your names. You didn't even wait for that part, Tim. That's confidence, I'm telling you.
Well, when he had three seconds, he...
Yeah. Good indication. Okay, let's see, it is...
Quick question.
Yeah.
Could, Sid, did you wanna say anything real quick, or a sudden look on your face?
Yes. The, currently, Blatenberg, Maryland, uh, is having a controversy regarding their memorial that was put up after World War I. Granted, it's in, it's of a cross, but, but the mothers of lost sons in World War I, that's what they put in, apparently it's gonna go to the Supreme Court. And just, unfortunately, veterans don't get all the respect and the honor that they should, is, uh, I have it in my book, and I believe twenty fourteen, you guys gave me a resolution supporting this. Is it possible you could give us something in writing saying that you have approved our design and you support it? Just so that if anybody comes back and fights us, I, I, I got something, or we have something to show.
Absolutely, it's a part of our official records.
It'll be a part of the official record of the meeting.
So, but yes.
I, I, I'll have a letter transmitting the official record of the approved minutes of the meeting showing that this action was taken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sid.
Incident he was mentioning is, is, the history of that is amazing. It was, it was originally put on, by, with private funds on private property. And because the Maryland Department of Transportation needed additional right of way, they basically seized the property, so now it's state property.
And now people are...
And now there's an issue. It's a hundred years later. And that's only part of the backstory.
Welcome to twenty nineteen.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's really amazing. Okay, um, unfortunately, we have another group here that... How long do you think your discussion is gonna take?
It'd just take a few minutes, or... I'd rather...
Is that our few minutes or your few minutes?
It's, it's my few minutes.
Because if it's your few minutes, we're gonna go eat dinner. No, if it's our two minutes, it gets better quicker.
This is more...
I have, I have a clock, so, well, let, let's see, let's see how far we can, can, can go here. County attorney, you have...
No comments.
Okay, and so now you're up.
Yes, sir.
Let's see what we can do.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you recall at your retreat last year, you agreed to maintain your priorities, but one of the things that you did identify is that emphasis should be on high-quality citizen services aligned with available resource that transcends all departments and functions. And as you know, I've been working with the departments of planning and zoning and building inspections since then to reorganize, to, to provide more efficient, responsible customer service, and that's realigning and integrating departmental duties and responsibility, promoting, promoting individuals, reassigning current personnel, and adding administrative... I'm pleased to report to you that we're well underway with that, uh, that implementation. We are now, uh, working through three areas of, of work. We have a Building and Development Services, uh, work group that will be the front counter. We, we are going to institute a no wrong door approach, meaning anybody that comes in for building and, and planning services will be greeted either over the phone or, or in person with, with a, uh, staff that will be able to answer pretty much all of the inquiries related to planning and subdivision and, and zoning and building, um, that are routine. And then the building inspections work group will continue with the building inspections as have in plan review as they have in the class. And then the Planning and Services work group will be doing those higher-level planning functions, zoning functions, and staff support to the planning commission, the board supervisors, and the board of zoning deals. I've put in, uh, detailed charts that were developed, and I'm pleased to report that Barbara Crozier, uh, here has been promoted to the Building and Development Services Manager and has undertaken quite a, quite a bit of work of, of re-engineering how we go about it. GW Gray continuing on certainly in his building official. And then Sandra Thornton is becoming our, our Planning Services Manager. And so, I, I bring this to you because this has been something that we've been under process. You all have been aware of what we've been in process, but this is the first chance I've had to opportunity to recognize the folks that are doing the work, but also to, to bring this as, as a public, uh, public information. So that's really all I had to do.
Real quick question.
Yes, sir.
Going back to all of your charts. Planning-related issues go to planning, correct? You, you said when answering the phones, that...
If, 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 well, I'm gonna lean, most of the questions, general routine questions should be able to be handled on that, that, that initial call. If, if, if it requires, say, somebody wants to talk about a special use permit application or a, a, a higher degree subdivision plat or something like that. I mean, I've got Sandra and Barbara here, right?
Yeah, is that...
Well, obviously, if we're trying to help people quickly, we're not going to spend a lot of time at the counter or on the phone with someone. They're gonna have to be sent to the planning department. Right now, that's a difficult task to do.
Okay, but i- i- it's a, a, a first answer, but all the technical goes over to planning, is that...
Well, I, I think, I, I think there's a level, if, if somebody is building a house and wants to know what the setbacks are for the house and, and, and those type of zoning questions, but if it gets into, you know, a rezoning or, or, or land development, then that would go...
Okay, that's...
I think, the, the way I interpreted this is that the, the decision about the inquiry would be made by you and your staff, and if you, uh, need to pass it for further review, you would, if you can handle it, you certainly would. So that, that decision point and, and part of your authority would be to make those decisions and direct the, the call or the inquiry, whatever, as, as needed.
Okay.
Issue the appropriate permits, zoning permits and stuff like that.
Just for the record, I, I was not involved in a good portion of this conversation, so...
And that's a good thing, right?
Yes, yes, it was a very good thing, but I just wanted to make sure that I had a good understanding. Thank you.
It, it's essentially kind of this, this front gatekeeper role in, in moving things along.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just, like I said, I wasn't involved in some of it, and I wanted to make sure I had a good understanding.
And I, I think, I think it's important that, you know, this, this is gonna have to evolve a little bit, especially the coordination among the groups, because I, I see something under, there's a chart called work graph, work group staff assignments, he tried to say. And under responsibilities, under your column, it shows nine-one-one addressing, and then over under GW, there is, uh, GPS addressing. I, I sure hope those are recognizable as somewhat the same thing at the end of the day. However that gets worked out, it, it's...
But it's two different segments to the same object.
Right, and, and so that, that kind of coordination and, and, and crossing is, is something that still has to be worked out. Obviously, the, while there's, there's three stacks of duties and assignments here, you know, to, to serve the public the way we want to, it, it's not gonna look like that operationally. Any, any call could trigger all sorts of pinging back and forth, and that's, and, and that's to be expected, and I think that's what we wanna be prepared for in terms of serving the, the needs of the citizen. That's, the, the board's objective in doing this is to, you know, provide that, that better, more coordinated service to the, to the citizens. I mean, that's what this is really all about, so... Yeah, I mean, I, I applaud what you're trying to do here. I encourage you to keep refining it. This is, I don't view this as the final answer, this is just the answer of the day. Uh, and, and when things need to change or move, I encourage you to, you know, bring those ideas forward. Efficiency is gonna be important, having this be as responsive as it, as it can be, so... It's, anytime you start rattling the, the bucket of marbles, it, it, things get confusing for a while, but it's, I, I think we're headed in a, in a good direction that... And, and the goal is that the, the, uh, a very high percentage of the needs of the citizens can be met between your, Barbara's organization and GW's organization, different, different roles. But, you know, there will be other issues, bigger projects or, or, or things that need review that, that Sandra would have to get involved with. But her, her review, I think, is, is sort of that small set of either more complicated or more involved kind of projects that, where that needs to be handled.
Res zoning, special uses.
Yeah, all those kind of things, so... All right, any, you, anybody have any comments or questions of us while you're here?
It is a work in progress, and we will keep working at it.
Yeah, well, bear with us, too, because we're, we're, you know, it's easy for us to say that we've got this beautiful big goal of trying to meet the needs of the citizens. Pulling that off is not a, not as easy as saying it. We know, we, we know that even if we don't always say it, so... Uh, keep, keep working at it, I mean, you, you know, let's, let's keep our eye on that goal, and where there are opportunities to do something a better way or have a better idea, we're, we're open. And I, I like what you've done so far, I think you've made a lot of progress in a short period of time, so keep at it. We do have some staffing vacancies that need to be dealt with, and hopefully those will, those will come fairly soon. Any other comments or questions? All right.
Thank you, John.
Let's see, but, board comment, anybody have any board comment?
Yes. Mr. Eames did a presentation this evening, and I just want to revisit the fact that we are still working towards a county reassessment department getting away from contracting. And I'd like to see that happen substantially within the next three years.
Ms. Bradley and I have talked about that, and as we transition with her role as Assistant County Administrator for Management Services, that actually is on, on, on top of the list. I'm also pleased to report we've hired, she's been able to hire a finance manager that will start on April first, so that try, process of transitioning into her new roles and responsibility is coming soon.
We, we had talked about having a work session sometime in the not-too-distant future on rezoning and the various approaches and pros and cons.
Reassessments.
How did I say? Did I say reassessments?
You said rezoning.
Reassessments, sorry.
Whoa.
Reassessments.
Some, somebody gets a certain reassessment, might think he's been reassessed.
Yeah, that's right. They wish they were. Okay, any other comment, anybody?
I, I had one quick one. I was out in the boat on Sunday riding around, looking at properties, uh, on the eastern end of the county, and my, my simple question is, did, did people's parents not teach them that there are trash cans that are at home and not the side of the highway? I, it's embarrassing. And, and it's not, not just on six oh one, it's on this road, it's on that road, and I rode all the way back through Mine Run, up Tower Road, on, on into, uh, Rapidan, and it's the same everywhere, it's just, it's disgusting.
We, we may need to revisit that twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine.
Ten-thousand-dollar fine.
Works for me.
I, I told a story this morning. Last week I was going on twenty, I just had gone past the, the entrance from the high school there, and in front of me, there was a car, windows went down on both sides, and stuff came out of the car on both sides. Looked like, you know, fast food kind of bags, just, you've gotta be kidding me. I, unfortunately, it was not the car in front of me, so I couldn't see the license number, but, uh, yeah, I, I, it's, it's remarkable, frankly, that we're...
The literal drop for a short period of time while sheets remodels, so that'll reduce the amount of litter for a month or two.
Somebody just left a stack of tires there.
Right, goodness. Any other board comment?
Uh, just, I did get a response back from, from my acquaintance, uh, who says that generally the fu- fuel of choice is propane because it does not deteriorate over time. Diesel is much less expensive, but you have to use it up within a year if stored above ground, and within three years, it's below ground, so...
So...
I don't have any idea what size tanks they're...
You have to do a lot of, lot of, lot of testing to use up a tank of fuel.
Exactly, so we may need to have them look how, at the propane doses.
I, I forwarded that to you and Stephanie, so...
All right. Any others? Punks to boards and commissions, anybody? Have any today? Calendar items? I saw a stack of calendars, but I never got around to looking at them.
Changed to the airport.
Is that what it was, okay. All right.
Ready?
Yes.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion consideration of the assignment appointment promotion performance, demotion salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body with respect to CSA, FAP, planning, broadband manager, and fire department. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal vice specialized counsel concerning orange volunteer rescue. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including the interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of terms and scopes of such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body with respect to landfill. Whereas per section, pursuant to sections two point two, thirty seven, eleven A one, A eight, and A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia, since discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of four state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
Well moved.
Courtesy, aye?
Aye.
You next. Thank you. Thank you all.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Freighton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye. Okay, now, uh... Yeah, the, the announcement, first of all, we can only deal with lands and roads in our county, in Orange County. So that narrows the scope substantially, and we can only deal with through trucks. And so the, given that...
That's all I offered up.
It's, it's all we can do. And through trucks, the alternate route is really five twenty-two and twenty. And so that's what the announcement says. I haven't seen it, but I'm, based on my conversations with you, that's where we ended up, is that right? Okay. It's a little more detailed than that, because it, there's some wiggling through the town, but, but to the first order. Now, that can't happen, be, you know, unless Culpeper goes along with it, because you can't get from Rapidan Road to five twenty-two in Orange County.
Exactly.
Sure you can, it's...
One of those large helicopters is easier.
No, you just, it depends on how you go. Five twenty-two and Rapidan Road are both in Orange County, so you can get to them.
Not directly, yes. So...
You, you can go down Clark's Mountain Road.
Absolutely. You come into town of Orange, you go over and hit five twenty-two.
I think it's gonna be rather vocal.
Vocal? I'm gonna be vocal.
But, I, 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 the, the... Our role, as I understand it from talking to Alan, is to have the public hearing and pass to VDOT the task of making the decision. We're not really involved in the decision process. Our role is to hold a public hearing, recommend an alternate, alternate route, and pass the transcript of the public hearing and the resolu- a resolution to VDOT.
Yeah, but what is our resolution?
What the announcement said.
Right, and that's what I was working on finishing that I'll tell to you this evening or in the morning. But it is basically... Um, but it is basically what's in the announcement. The segment of Route six fifteen that you all have the ability to consider, meaning from basically the town of Orange to the Culpeper County boundary and then the alternate route of twenty to five twenty two.
Is that our only option?
We recommend that option, that is our recommended option.
If we recommend it.
Well, uh, the announcement says that's our recommended option.
If you adopt the resolution and choose to provide.
I ain't rec- I haven't recommended anything.
And that's what I'm asking is.
Based on the public hearing, presumably we could recommend something else.
Or we could recommend nothing.
Or we could recommend nothing, yeah, I mean, there, we, there are.
In which case you're not, yeah, then you're not sending anything to VDOT.
Correct, VDOT will only, if, if, if I hear him, hear Alan correctly, VDOT will only act on a recommendation and a transcript of the public hearing, that's, those are the two things.
The recommendation that includes an alternate route.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then, and they're, they're going to complain that Alan hadn't done anything for them and it's gonna be late and Alan's left to make the decision.
Well, since it, it, the alternate route includes primary roads, the Commonwealth Transportation Board has to make the decision. VDOT can make the decision at the district level or at the commissioner level for secondary road alternates. But if it involves primary road alternates, the Commonwealth Transportation Board makes the decision. But again, it, it, Culpeper has to go along with it for it to make any sense. And from what I've heard, they're not gonna do anything.
Brian has made the county administrator in Culpeper aware that that, that at least the public hearing had been scheduled.
Yeah, but their board has.
I guess you heard me open the public comment period and close it, right? I heard a door, that's why I just did that.
Yes, there's only one motion left that I'm aware of.
All right, we made it through the agenda, any, did I hear a motion to adjourn?